Recording.
It's. We use it.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to our members and guests today, both in person and joining us virtually as well. I'm just filling in briefly for Jason Poubert, who is our current president of the AI this year. Like a special welcome to some of our newest DIA members and ACE Document Solutions is joining us today from ACE is Angie. Thanks for the support. And two key mandates of the Digital Imaging Association are to provide education and networking opportunities for our members like today's event. We hope you find this educational aspect worthwhile, and we invite your feedback. Our membership is comprised of prepress, printers, packaging converters, designers, advertisers, print buyers, equipment and consumable manufacturers and vendors. If you wish, if you're with us as a guest today, please consider joining the Digital Imaging Association. Today's session is an example of the high caliber meetings which we run. If you'd like more information on membership, please contact either myself or Marg McLeod, who's seated to my right at four one six two five four four nine four one or marg M A R G at digitalimagingassociation.com. Like most trade associations today, financial stability does not come from the membership revenues alone. And so we turn to our vendors, suppliers for support of our goals. So we're honored to continue to receive the support and recognition of the DIA's contribution to the growth and development of the graphics industry from the following companies. Our platinum sponsors are Canon, HP, Innovative Display, Sonic Minolta, Spicers and Trinac Global Logistics. Our gold sponsors are Adobe, Fujifilm, graphics Canada, Heidelberg, Kodak, Kongsberg Precision Cutting Systems, Mini Giants and Plastic and Paper. Our silver sponsors are G M G Color and Sydney Stone, and we encourage you to please consider these companies and their demonstrated support of the industry for making these purchasing decisions and your purchasing decision moving forward. And technology for this webinar has been graciously provided by HP as well as the food for those present. And thank you, Ali. So today's topic is an open town hall idea exchange. So this would be rather unique that we're going to be engaging both in person as well as virtually for questions and answers. So please don't be shy to solicit any questions or give feedback on them. So I'll be moderating the online portion. Dan to my left will be doing the in-person room. So today we invite DIA members and guests to discuss their biggest business challenges of 2023 and how they solve them. So this will be a rare opportunity to network with your peers, either online or in person, as I illustrated, to share your insight and solutions, discuss strategies you use to solve all of your most pressing issues and predict the printing industry's imminent future. So we encourage everyone to participate, those here in the room, as I mentioned, and those attending via Zoom. Feel free to submit questions or feedback to expound on answers provided by previous questions on chat. So the moderator today is myself, Stephen Longmire, National Sales Manager with Sydney Stone. My role includes researching new product lines and manufacturers to distribute, setting pricing structures and managing the partner program, conceiving and implementing market initiatives as well to support our sales efforts. Seated to my left is the co-moderator, who is Dan Thompson. He's the CEO and founder of Italic Press. Dan is one of the printing industry's foremost leaders in pushing the definition of what print is through innovation and automation. Italic Press crafts high value visual communication projects that are inspirational by removing barriers for clients so they have uniquely stunning and meaningful branding experiences. Italic Press has facilities in Toronto and St. John, New Brunswick, and services clients globally. Thank you, Dan, for joining us today. Thank you. Excellent. So yes, I encourage everyone in the room, please to turn off your phones or at least five, put them to vibrate or mute. So we don't have any interruptions. And at this point, we will begin with our first question that we'll pose both online and within the room. So. So what we'll say is, what are the most concerned, what are you most concerned with as we enter 2024? Perhaps high industry, high interest rate environments, slow economic activities, retaining staff, or retaining staff, my apologies, and retaining customers. So. Turn over to Dan for the rooms.
So the room, I, I'll start here. I mean, this really comes down to what's keeping you up at night and and what are the biggest challenges moving forward in 2024? Is there anyone that would want to volunteer right off the bat with some of their biggest challenges that they see coming in 2024? Please. Todd. See to have an answer formulated.
My biggest concern right now would be managing the balance between investment into the business and remaining profitable. To keep up with the investment required in, in automation, the new digital kind of infrastructure required. You can spend until you're blue in the face, but yeah, so managing that balance within the business of reinvest.
So reinvesting into new technologies, keeping current and then growing the, the, the work behind that.
Yeah, and there's like, there's a ton of shiny objects to chase too. So it's deciding the order to which you invest in those shiny objects and, and what your, your path to profitability is, your easiest path to profitability is off of those investments for sure is probably what keeps me up at night the most.
For sure, for sure. Would anyone concur with that assessment who's running a printing organization here today? And how about vendors? What, what are your big challenges for 2024? Stefan.
I'm a vendor with Domtar, so we're in the paper business.
Yep.
One of our biggest challenges this year is to understand demand. Because there is a huge difference from our point of view between consumption and demand, but consumption, we can't put a finger on it. So in the past year, the, a lot of everyone who could find some paper when there was a bit, there's some, some shortages in, in, in paper availability, everyone went and found some products or wherever they could, not everyone, but a lot of people went, do this. That built a lot of inventory that everyone's aware of. This issue came up. There's a lot of inventory that got built. Meanwhile, the, the, the demand for our products may have decreased because the consumption of that inventory was being consumed in 2023.
Yeah.
We have equipment that we have to staff and, and make sure we produce paper based on what the demand will be. And we've lost touch on what the demand is because our, our traditional customers in some categories went somewhere else. Once that inventory will have been consumed or everything that was purchased in emergency, didn't matter what price it was, where it came from, nobody looked. Now that's all being, that's all slowly disappearing. And now we're seeing this group of customers coming back to us and say, I need product. You've always been there for us. And then we're going to have some issues and try to match that in the short term.
So are we at the end of the oversupplied, stockpiled paper in the printing industry right now?
I, I would hope, I would hope, I would hope we are.
That's a hope.
But I, I think we, we're definitely seeing, but we're still seeing, there's still lots, lots of inventory that's available in North America. And, and that's, that's, that's definitely giving, uh, giving everyone a headache because a paper machine is, is something that you, you, you can't run a paper machine 20% of the time. Right. They're meant to run a hundred percent of the time. And at one point, when you hit a certain number of percentages, you say, well, this is not going to be making paper anymore. It's going to make pulp or it's going to make kitchen grade. It's going to go away from, from this. So this, you, this is going to happen in 2024 where you're going to see some capacity being removed in North America because of the, I guess, the aftermath of all that inventory that moved, that was, that was built. So I think that's something, and then the sad part is that restarts the whole thing about, oh, there's some, there's, there's some availability issues because there's going to be less. How do we do this? So it's all about understanding where the demand is and making sure we can, we can match the, the production to, to the actual demand.
I think globally, that's, that's probably a valid comment all across every industry right now. Because I mean, we see that as in small business as, as a problem as well, where our customers are having a hard time forecasting their demands as well. I'm thinking about agencies and manufacturers. So is there anybody else that wants to tag on to that?
Can I actually ask Todd a follow-up question to his comment? So my name is Anthony Nicoletti. I work with Stefan. Sure. Come on, let's pick. I work with Brian. I, Brian told me to ask you this question. All right. But so, so you, you know, you said, you made a comment talking about the need to, to, you know, to invest or digitize or, you know, where to spend your money. Do I continue to invest in my business? And so I would just ask you this. What drives those thoughts? The need to be first to market with, with something? Or is it that your client, your client's requirements are changing, run lengths we know are getting smaller? What drives your need to go from a sheet fed press to, you know, I don't know how many indigos you have in there now. There you go, Ali. A little bit of a shot at you. But yeah, he's doing fine. But is it, is it, is it that your customers' requirements and demands are changing? Is it run lengths getting shorter or is it, hey, I want to be first to market so I can grab a bunch of market share here in this new?
I would say there's a little bit of, I wouldn't call it necessarily first to market, but it would be like trying to work to gain the biggest market share on print that we feel is going to be relevant. So if I have a client pushing me into some dying market statement, let's call it. No offense to people who print. But technology is pushing in a different direction there. If I had a, a partner that was pushing me into that, I would, I would not invest at all. Alternatively, if we see that print is, or we believe that print is going to be relevant in another market in another way that isn't a stretch for us to grow into, we'll reinvest heavily in that. So for us, something like a photo books was a big.
Yep.
A big investment that we've made recently over the last, let's call it five years. We didn't, we produced a lot of micro orders, so on-demand orders generated from the internet for various partners, but we weren't in the photo book space and that's a very specific.
Yep.
Part of the on-demand space. And we felt like that was a good space. It was under service in the Canadian market, blah, 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 blah. And it wasn't a huge stretch for us to enter it through. We had kind of the digital infrastructure to support it. So then we invested heavily in the equipment, the capitals.
And then the equipment choices that you made, knowing that this was the application that I wanted to produce, were obviously influenced by that, right? I mean, that's a great device for photo book.
And I, and I am kind of, um, I intend to do this for decades. So I'm not interested in, in, I keep using the term both internally and right now, shiny object. We got to try to find a path that leads to relevancy for years and years and decades to come because I, I wouldn't be talking to school and saying the next, to chase a commercial printing purchase order is hard. And I'm not saying there isn't a market for it. It's still a part of our business. But if that was all I had to go on for the next two decades.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Yep.
Sleep would be hard to come by.
So I, I, I hear you there and I feel like a slow, you know, as the world evolves, you're looking for these longer term, uh, future-proof solutions. But then you, you mentioned too, it's, it's hard to sort of separate the wheat from the chaff and, and focus on the non-shiny up. Like the path to that goal is difficult in these days.
Correct. And, and you pick some that are losers too.
Sure.
To be clear.
Yeah.
We've gotten into stuff or tried stuff or invested in equipment that hindsight, probably shouldn't have done that. But you, you can't bet a thousand.
Oh, and you learn from these.
Fail fast.
Yeah, well, that's a great, that's, that's a great point.
Fail fast.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't.
We, 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 we really work hard not to attach any pride to a decision. So if, if we made a decision on something and it's just flat out wrong, we gotta, we gotta pivot on that.
Now, Stephen, did you have something to add to this?
I like Todd's analogy of fail fast. That's great. Rather than, you see so many people like dying by a thousand cuts because it's just like, they keep throwing more and more energy after a failing enterprise because of perhaps pride or capital investment in that equipment. And next thing you know, they're consuming their time, their energy, their resources. And it's not going to be a profit center for them, but they're sort of tied to it in some way. What we're noticing a lot from our customers is more so the labor, like part of that question was the labor shortage. So people are pressed to automate. So even, even with sort of a higher interest rate that we've had the last like half year kind of moving up, the cost analysis that a lot of our customers are doing is, it's better even buying an automated piece of equipment at this higher interest rate than trying to chase people that aren't able to fill that hole or can't fill it for a long period of time. It's sometimes in finishing roles, sometimes it's a little more of a transient sort of role where people kind of come in, come out. Cause it used to be the less of us, well, it used to be less automated. It used to be very manual. But now we're seeing definitely a push to automation, barcode, workflow automations. Mark probably, Mark Rad can speak to this as well too, in terms of like, people need to see the automation, the efficiencies, because they're realizing the ability to save money is as important as earning new revenue. So if they can save it and leverage it inside their existing enterprise, that's beneficial. I don't know, Mark, if you want to add anything to the automation.
Yeah, I'll add to that if that's okay. I'm looking at you, Dan.
It's fine.
So we're an integration company. We focus on software integration. We feel that the market has a lot of software out there. However, it's completely underutilized in many cases. Those who have made a great investment in software and have made the investment in deploying it with customization or optimization have made huge dividends off it. And I congratulate all those in the room who have done so. I'm looking at a couple of you guys. And for those who I don't know, I'd love to meet you after this. So I would concur. There is a lot of hunger and starvation for, for automation today. There is that dichotomy where it's been very manual and mechanical for so long and, and the labor forces are saying, well, it's always been this way. And then we have management teams who are saying, doesn't need to be this way anymore. So let's, let's transform our business a little bit. We're blessed at significance because we, we service two markets, both Canadian market and the US market. What we see, and I'm being very blunt here without offense to anybody, is that the, the Canadian market is lagging in the adoption of automation and integration. And we try and achieve for those customers, the highest level of automation by way of integrating your software systems and communicating.
Mark, why do you think there is a lag between American and Canadian markets or Euro markets in the adoption of, of automation?
Well, that's a good question. That's what keeps me up at night. Um, one of the, one of the things that keeps me up at night. There is, there are grants available. I think it's an economic thing more than anything.
Dollar thing?
It's, yeah, what we're seeing from the US customers is that their decision-making process is typically within 30 days. In Canada, it's 30 days to start thinking that they need to make a decision. It's just a temperament sort of thing. And again, I, I mean no offense here to anyone. So it's a little bit faster to, to conclude a transaction, especially when you're talking about transforming a business or automating a business. It's a lot faster in the States.
Sure.
I can tell you that in 2023, our, our sales in Canada died off at the beginning of the year. And then they resumed in Canada at towards the tail end of the year. Whereas they started very strong in the US and the last two months in the US quieted down. And so when I had a, a round table for our users a couple of weeks ago, they said, um, the reason why it died down is corporate North America quieted down on giving them the business. Not that they took away projects from us, but they, they slowed down their economics. Whereas in Canada, I would say, if there was someone that was giving me about $10,000 a month, they started to give me $2,000 a month. So it was a bit, bit of a different thing. And, and I think when there's negative news, um, the Canadians tighten up a little bit more.
We've had our, our share of that, I think in 2023. I feel, I feel for me as a small business owner, what I've seen when you talk about decision-making is that there's a lot of large corporations out there in the world right now that have, you know, reduced their workforces so much that corporations are having a hard time making decisions because there's no one there to make a decision. Is, is that, would, would you, everyone feel that on a sales side? Cause I certainly do. Okay. So any other challenges in this marketplace? What's your biggest challenge in this marketplace? Uh, as you see it, uh, Betty, would you have a, a comment to make on this?
Um, labor.
Labor.
We, we are struggling to find the right skilled people, um, to fulfill, um, to backfill some people that are retiring, et cetera. It's, it's hard to come by, right? You, you need somebody that's seasoned, but they're not readily available in the market or they're comfortable where they are. So it's hard to, you know, bring them over, right? So it's, um, and it takes time to train somebody from a grown up as well, right? So you know, if it's from the CSR planning, you know, it could take them a good couple of years to actually get them on a training path to become say an estimator or purchaser or what have you, right? And also in the creative space as well and prepress or, or forums for variable, those are very hard to come by as well. Yeah.
Dan, the, I, I did some work with students at TMU last year, part of the Sustainable Mail Group work. So we worked closely with some students. We had some interns in the summer and stuff. And I, I, I think the theme that we've seen over a couple of years is that even if they participate in the graphics communication management course, they come out, they're really thinking, uh, digital graphics. Right? The hands-on paper, hands-on bindery work, although they do it in, in like workshops and stuff like that. It's almost like they, they don't want to get their hands dirty. That's not what they got the course for. It's university level now, right? So it's, it's not like you're at college taking a course that might be more practical and you're thinking you're going to get a trade out. So I don't, um, anybody who's, who's got ideas on supporting the scholarship programs, et cetera, can influence the kinds of courses that kids are taking and trying to come into the industry. Or who's doing a good job of training and has like, uh, one of the interns we had, talked to him the other day. He moved over into the solar panel business from the graphics business.
Sure.
And they have a full year program. He gets paid to go to six different departments in that between Texas and Canada to see how the solar panel business is put together and find out where he's going to fit. Right? And so I think we're missing some of these elements where you say, if for the long-term good, if you're in for decades, you gotta put, you gotta put some of the, you know, investment early in the people to make them stick around a bit, make them feel like the industry's got something for them.
So on, onboarding support and, and continuous training for employees, something like, I just, this guy was so keen to be part of this industry because they were doing this for him. There was 10 of them in his company that had this privilege of, of like sampling the company. He was, he's going to be in solar panels for the rest of his life. You know, we'll never get it back to the printing business. Print solar.
Yes.
Okay. So the next question, both, I encourage our online attendees as well to please expound on any answers and also please, yes, please submit questions you may have as well. So next question we have is what is the current state of the print industry? Are suppliers slash printers to this industry busy, slow or steady?
And that's a great question. I mean, uh, if we were to take a show of hands, who's busy, busy, busy? Like going right off the rails.
On the vendor side or on the?
Everybody.
Busy.
Yeah. And who's doing media? Uh, and who, like, I'm sure we're all here, who's doing slow? No one's answering that one. When we came out of the pandemic, it was really funny for me to see and take, you know, ask people in various industries actually who was doing what. And, uh, some people who are slower, it really was depending on what they were doing and who they were servicing, obviously. So, uh, if you had business that was through the pandemic, uh, you know, growing or if you had attached yourself to retail or, you know, some other type of business that was basically shut down restaurants and all that sort of service industry, you were not busy. But, uh, I think Stefan, your comment earlier about, uh, you know, backlogs of paper and, and finding out, you know, you know, what is the, the coming demand? I mean, that's really the, the, the key question that most businesses are, are looking at. Will it be strong? What are the exterior influences like the election in the US, border? Lots of things going on in the world or supplies. It's, it's, it's sort of a crazy, uh, market. Mark, you have something to add?
Yeah, I wanted to add a little thing to the, the last question and that was, um, we're seeing a lot of job grants coming around.
Yes.
Training grants coming around. These are all very inspiring opportunities for, for our customer base, which are printers and packaging converters out there. It's an opportunity to take advantage of, and we've been helping a number of companies in that way. And that's why I say we're busy, busy because there is, there's available funding for, for the opportunity to modernize your business or retain your, your staffing or invigorate staff.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as we see grants, the, the, uh, the other side of that was loans and coming out of pandemic. I mean, I was shocked to hear the CBA loan repayment, uh, amount, like 80% of companies could not pay it back. That tells me that the general health of the economy is probably not as robust as it should be. In speaking about, you know, state of the printing industry, I see more consolidation out there. I mean, who's merging and acquisitioning out there? Everybody. And, uh, and then where is that, where is that market, you know, being changed? It's the middle of the market, the bigger, getting big and the niche are getting more niche, I, I feel. Does anyone else want to comment on that? State of the printing industry in 2024? Is there more print, less print?
I want to comment on that.
Go Angie.
So our has broad range of services. So we do large format, we do plotting, small format. We do scanning and some areas of our business are really taking off and other areas of our business are really slowing down. We're heavily concentrated in architects, engineers, contractors. So we know what's happening with that industry. So we have people working in those departments and the business is shrinking. And so how do we, what do we do with those people? Do we retrain them, reallocate them to different departments? Do we continue to focus on those? Like, how do we, you know, sort of dedicate the proper resources and time to the areas of the business that are growing versus the ones that are declining?
So how, how do you like physically shift people? And what are those mechanisms? Yeah. As, as it changes, is it changing quickly, et cetera? Quick rate of change?
It's been a quick rate of change with, um, the interest rate fluctuation. So then do you just hold tight and wait that out or do you make the moves? So those are kind of some of the questions that have been batting around in my head.
Thank you. Eric, you're a trade printer in the room. Up in the Mark Marion. How are you, uh, finding the state of printing these days?
I find the industry, we, we see a lot more printers that we can be very busy for a week. And then we could be very quiet for a few days. It seems like everyone is all talking to the doctor and just stuff. It's in wave. We used to see this in a wave, but it's in month kind of period. But now this frequency comes in a lot more. So we could be packed, jammed for two days, three days, five days. And then phone internet stopped working for a few days or something.
Yeah, like, yeah, no one's calling.
No one's calling. No emails come in and then all of a sudden it's like boom, it was like 10, 15, 20 jobs coming. So yes, we see that a lot more frequently than what we used to. So maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I just like to jump in, in, uh, in the book industry, book publishing and manufacturing. Similar problems, similar issues is not being able to forecast. So we didn't know after the, after the, after COVID, which products were going to be foremost purchased by the publishers? Is it hard covers it? Perfect down? Is it digital? Is it offset? Is it lift, don't floor color, whatever that is? So what, um, to answer, you know, your issue there and a little bit of that is you want to work very hard on eliminating the peace and balance. Those are our biggest challenges. The only way, the only way we were able to do that was to, A, look at the plant in Toronto as a giant toolbox rather than people tied to specific, uh, equipment. So exactly like you said, you just don't know which market's going to shoot. And it could be in the next week, it could be a month, it could be a year from now. So you really got to focus on cross-training teams to do completely different products and have the flexibility, we talked a little bit about the equipment, to have the flexibility with the equipment to do different products within the industry. And that's, I mean, that's, that's a simple solution, but there's no easy answer. It's, it's extremely difficult. So I think that's a lot of what Todd and, and Cobra's been doing. There's no easy answer. It's it's extremely difficult. So I think that's a lot of what Todd and and Cobra's been doing. And it's very difficult to do and where do you, where do you invest and where do you move the people? These are huge questions and for us. Understanding that, um, diving into sales and operations planning. And understanding what the market's asking for is really key. So it drives investment, drives HR, drives, drives people, um, where we wanna focus and what we're gonna train them to do, whether it's. In the plant, in the office. You know, I I see is it a pressman, learning how to run a binder, is it, is it a binder tech learning how to run a press? Uh, these are all types of things that we looked at, but we've done a really, we've really pushed the cross-training because we just don't know. What the market's gonna push to the plant in the next six months.
Do you, do you think, Jason, that this is like a symptom of increased digitization of an automation of workflow? Like this uh, this inability to uh, to forecast?
No, I I think it was, I think it was the pandemic that that created it. So the, you know, we all used to forecast based on history for the most part. And you know, sales and sales execs would base what's gonna happen this year in history. You can't do that anymore. You have to have a closer connection with whoever you're 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 is buying from you. So that they can talk to you about what their their forecasts are and if they're struggling with their forecasts, I think it's up to us. To help them to forecast. So we need to, we've got a lot of data based on, on whoever our customers are. And we can help them forecast based on that data.
Challenges, last four years, we've had no normalcy.
No.
So like we have a ton of data, we just don't know and generally thinking it's not, it's not normal. Like it doesn't predict the future necessarily, hence the paper market, right? Like. If it was white, we were buying it. And it didn't matter what the week was or if it was coded or uncoded and and we could print on it and then, but that screws you guys up because you don't know if. The uncoated market was, was being supported by the lack of coded paper. I feel like the last eight months, ten months, maybe a year. We're starting to see some normalcy in terms of our business, in terms of demand. Now, the economy, the change in the economy a little bit, I think it's impacted a slowdown. But it isn't the crazy roller coaster ride of like every month you come into some new catastrophe. Um, so that's just kind of my perspective. I feel like every day that goes by, it's gonna get a little bit more normal.
I can say as a paper manufacturer, when we talk to some of our larger customers that, you know, ones that we deal with directly. Their comments have been, it's very quiet and then like was said over here. It's urgent, like can you do the, I give you this job if I can get it in three days. Very difficult for them to either A, have materials to be able to produce that, to s- you know, to have staff, right? So so Jason's comment about having, you know, a flexible workforce for sure, that I I I see a lot of value in that, but that seems to be continuing. Um, so how do you predict like, you know, and like, so how do you predict? How do you staff? How do you forecast? It seems like that, that seems to be the biggest challenge right now in 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 our industry is. Is predictability isn't there and so how do we forecast? How do we plan? You know, whether it's paper mill, do we turn? Paper machines into paper towel machines or do we turn them into and just sell pulp for diapers? Like all of those things are 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 big question marks for sure.
I would just question though, down that topic of, uh, it can be your job if you can do it in three days. That sounds a lot like twenty nineteen to me.
Yeah.
Right? And that was just the nature of overcapacity in the marketplace and they could get it.
Yeah.
And I think that's still the reality of our industry right now.
Well, I just, I just know that we've had a number of opportunities recently where it's like, hey, can you can, can you sheet this to this size and get it to me by in two days? Cause if you can, then you know, here's, here's an order for you.
But COVID changed all of that.
Yeah.
Right? Like COVID changed availability of paper, capacity, whoever had paper didn't have capacity. Um, I I feel like this is in in essence, a little bit going back to what it was was.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it used to be like, during Co- COVID, you had the paper to print the product. It, they're less price sensitive because.
Nobody asked for the price.
They just needed to know it could be done.
And I also think that that's kind of. Part of the marketing email that came up for this meeting was growth in sales, growth in sales over the last two years, growth in sales in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, all of our prices went up. It doesn't mean our page count went up.
Yeah, volume didn't, the price went up because all did everything, everything cost.
So I do believe, myself included, we sat there and patted ourselves on the back a whole lot, like. Were we really doing it?
Was it the volume or the dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, I think we were all just doing what we could with the moment that was in front of us, but. I I do feel like the last three years, like you kind of take that little moment time out because there was nothing normal about it.
Yeah.
Having outlier, looking at long-term forecasting trends.
So have you reset right now? Is this a reset year, twenty twenty four for you?
In terms of what, what do you mean by reset?
Like, uh, is this where you're gonna start taking real data points because the last three and a half years were kind of outliers? We don't know yet.
I don't know, we took a lot of data over the last three years. I just, I've just learned that you can't, you can't make really concrete decisions on it. I guess you can pull information from it, but man, it's hard.
But like you said, I mean, you you had customers saying, yeah, go ahead without asking the price. So you can't necessarily base what you think you're gonna generate revenue in twenty twenty four based on those previous years because. You know, maybe people overpaid for something that now they've got some options and they won't overpay for, so a lot of that historical information you have is. You know, to use a word that my young child use, it's a little sus.
But I wanna clarify too, they didn't overpay, they were paying for available capacity.
Absolutely, yeah, so maybe overpay wasn't the right word, but hey, a- absolutely, absolutely, you got the paper and you can do it. Yep, that's fine, get it done. So I I would just add on that, I think in twenty twenty four, at least from our perspective, from a paper mill perspective. Because we do think a lot of that overcapacity, over supply has hopefully bled through. Um, that this might be a year where we get to a more traditional, uh, you know, and 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 and. It'll, it'll take to the end of the year to be able to, to really, to actually say that that's the case. But we're optimistic at least that this could be a more traditional year.
Uh, where I am too, uh, from the small biz, because I see signs that are happening out in the marketplace right now that look familiar to me. Instead of whacked out crazy. Um, so from that perspective, I'm hopeful. Um, from a sales perspective, if we're talking sales and marketing. I also feel that there are opportunities now appearing because people are back in the office, basically, or back. In office state of mind and.
Consumption should probably be a little bit more uh, traditional or normal, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, so I mean, if I were to, if I were to pull the room for a show of hands, twenty twenty four? Who thinks it's going to be a better year than last year?
I don't know how you define better, but I think it'll be more, I think we're, we're trying to hope it'll be more traditional or typical.
Right.
Yeah.
I I just wanna play devil's advocate, there's, you know, there was a huge need for capacity. And all of the printers invested mightily in capacity, just like the mills did keep up. Um, so now there's this huge amount of capacity, where's all of that sales gonna come from? So I would think twenty twenty four is even more of a correction. Where everyone is going to be figuring out who's going to gain that market share. Based on price, you know, best price, while the service levels trust. Getting in front of your clients, building those relationships, which which was gone over the last three years. That's, I think, probably what we'll really see, uh, unfortunately, twenty twenty.
Well, I I can see in 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 your space, in your world. Because people did buy technology to service what they thought, you know, hey, twenty twenty two is great, like it's always gonna be like this. Let's buy stuff to be able to, and now it's not, so I could see, you know, I I think Dan asked at the beginning, uh, is there M and A activity happening? Probably, there 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 there's going to be, I mean, we've already seen it, right? You guys, in fact, um, but so there could be more of that and then, you know, we talked about those CBA loans. I mean, that that's gonna cost some people some heartburn, those CBA loans and having to repay that, that CBA loan, so I, you know, there 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 may by the end of the year be less. Options for customers, which hopefully means the ones that are remaining, you know, do have more options.
Mike Hallwell, um, what would be your perspective on the vendor side of this?
From my perspective, when I go across the country talking to different printers that do different products. I think the first three quarters of the year will be pretty flat. It's a droop year.
Right.
And and typically, we don't see any activity or very little activity until droop is behind us. And then you're rolling into the summer, so I think the first three quarters will be flat and we'll see what happens in the fourth quarter.
Okay, yeah, I was just on the phone call with someone down in the United States uh, yesterday. In fact, saying that the bottom of equipment uh, sales has dropped out of the U S market. Do we think that's a true statement? I I don't know. Has thing, have things changed in the U S in the last month?
Uh, from our side of it, I think um, depending on the product, I mean, small, small orders, I think are still happening. I'm busy on certain products, large investments, again, I I don't believe will, will happen until droop is behind us and. Everyone's had a, a good sense of what, what to see for the future. I mean, there's no crystal ball. I don't think droop is gonna show anyone anything that they're not aware of today.
That's interesting, yeah.
The only other thing I would say is the last three years, well, I guess, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, two, maybe a little bit. There was so much investment by the government into the market.
True.
That there was so much equipment purchased, it was this bubble. And coming out of it as there isn't the same sense of liquidity in the market, that just isn't gonna be the same sense of capital investment.
Coupled with higher interest rates of borrowing too, to.
Yeah, well, that's the shocking part, isn't it? So.
Yeah.
I do have a question from one of our uh, virtual attendees here, this is from Dan Mustafa, it's actually posed to you, Todd, sorry. Exactly, uh, question Dan has is can Todd expand briefly on those losing opportunities? You can or you don't have to, obviously, Todd, uh, that you'd mentioned, or what was very successful in terms of new business? I I might just say before I turn it to you is, I've noticed that, you know, there was a big push for printing embellishment heavily before SPOT EV foiling. A couple of key players in that market, that seemed to all sort of go away, the battle for the shelf presence when retail fell away. It was just get it printed, get it out. I can get soft touch elimination on it, that's good enough. I don't know if it would be that or anything like that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I would say kind of nichey products like that might be a little bit and and that isn't the nature of our business, but it certainly is the nature of. Some people's business, I mean, the losing opportunities, I would say we've made a couple of equipment purchases, won't get into it, but we made a couple of equipment purchases. And it's not necessarily always the fault of the, the manufacturer or the equipment. Sometimes it's just we thought we were going to be able to leverage it because we thought we were gonna penetrate a market and we just weren't. Um, and another losing one is we wait, invest heavily in a sales process on a new shiny client. That uh, is a big brand that you might think is going to really take it to the next level. And for whatever reason, it doesn't pan out. So there's, I mean, you can fail. And this is hard, like you can fail every which way in this business. Um, and yeah, there isn't a time in this to talk about the losing that. It's certainly we and I have done over my short career, but yeah, the truth is, I just think you gotta lick your wounds and get up.
Yeah, that I would, I would put that into the learning category perhaps.
Sorry, Todd, before, unless you go on, Dan, sorry, um, I was, I've been asked, I posed the same question to Jason and to Eric uh, as well.
Losing opportunities, yeah, for sure, um. It's exactly what I talked about, we, we watched the market in book publishing. Really push for a certain product type and by the time, you know, like you mentioned, um. His name, Mark, is it Mark? How long it takes Canadians to make a decision sometimes? By the time you make the decision, you do the investment, get the project completed in-house, the market's already shifted. So the market is not stable as it was pre-pandemic, it's shifting very quickly. And so we had, I wouldn't call it a losing opportunity, but I think um, ROI. The term of the ROI and the return of the ROI, ROI that we expected will be much different. But we were able to tool that in the plant and people, take advantage of the market opportunities that did show up. And that's, that's the difference, so, yeah, a lot of times you you have this great idea. It might not pan out now, but something may come in the future if you push for that market, it's not as fast as you want.
That's a great point, actually, Jason, is maybe you, it didn't lose ultimately, but you didn't realize the full potential if you moved quicker.
Yeah.
That, that's actually a good point. And Eric as well?
For us, I would say. What you guys have been talking about before is more, um, do more cross-training at that point and just reaching out to different customers. Um, because we're in the trade business, so we really hang on to other printers. And how they, what kind of work they have. So we're always behind the boss and we're the one that will get like three days, you can do it, then you get the jobs and. So that's where we are and we try to reach out, get more, no more other printers and. That way we can flat out so that if someone, some customers are slowing down, not everyone will be slowing down. So strategies.
For back to you, Dan.
Oh, we've done a lot of learning, um, over the last few years. I mean, yeah, there's time to market on decision-making is key. Uh, investing in new technology, I find, is always a fascinating game. Even at a micro level, you can have uh, something that totally rocks your world and then a- another thing that. You know, everything seems to be a hundred thousand dollars or more these days, so making a decision even on a stapler can. Difficult decision. So, um, yes, we've made our fair share of learning, um, over the past three years. I feel really the automation part is a difficult one to onboard. Uh, an automated client can really get you bogged into the weeds. Uh, especially when everyone's pushing you to go down that road uh, quickly and it doesn't happen quickly, so. Really, I think our biggest learning moments were to selectively choose who we're gonna automate. And then really go slowly and method, method. Methodically, yes, on how to onboard them properly, so for us, that was, that was a, a big. You know, we had a lot of stops and starts, um, especially in specific industries that, you know, were a fast-moving target. Because in COVID, you had to be a fast-moving target and then, you know, but that didn't necessarily, you know, get you. Sustainable online solutions, so um, that was, that was some of our biggest takeaways. Um, and then maybe someone from the TI group, that would be, that would be interesting that you're, Vincent, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, not specifically, but I would like to echo what Eddie was talking about the labor part.
Yes.
Um, I mainly overlook the estimate department and to be honest with you, I haven't seen any. Estimator younger than thirty years over the past ten years. And it seems like uh, TMU right now is basically. Like all the fresh grad coming out from TMU right now is either into planning or CSR, nothing else. They don't wanna get, get their hands dirty, but they don't even want to get into other departments in the company. Planning is seems like the only department getting fed blood right now. And um, it's gonna be a huge problem. I don't know, like automation is one thing that was trying to involve, but I don't know if. If the trend goes to this way, if we will be being forced to automate, automate all the process other than planning. Because no one will be doing anything other than planning in the future. So that's a huge problem. And with the pandemic, um, it forces a number of people who who is in their retirement age to go to retirement. And that pushes this issue even further. So that's what I found.
Hey, do you look like you have something to add?
Yes.
Well, one of those solutions, you have the salespeople do their own pricing.
Well, as a sales manager, I would never let.
I know I first started.
Exactly.
Doesn't matter what situation.
I know that take a lot, but I wanted to get, get into the sales side and then my question on that is, sales has always been near and dear to me is, um. What are you doing about sales now? I mean, you you went through COVID where you couldn't see customers usually personally. Sort of made that a wall in front of them. Now you're hoping they're back. I've had some, some people I've talked to about the difficulty it was of. Of not getting that personal relationship and trying to expand a sale within that account, because you can't even go in the building. I hear that's coming back a little bit, that they are, but then now, as you talk about all the investments that you've, you've done and trying to do. Where are you going with the sales force? Is it internal? Are you trying to build it from within? I mean, there's still people out there that people are trying to hire, salespeople are moving, moving around. Um, has a commission structure gone now? Are you looking at more salary salespeople? I just be interested to see how you, how you're dealing with that because. I'd just be interested to see how you, how you're dealing with that because you gotta bring it in and how you're bringing it in.
And the, I'll just add to that, just, I read a book a couple of years ago called The Machine. It's a sales, uh, process, a guy, I think he's from Australia. And, and he was like evening out sales salaries instead of it being commission-based. Allowing salespeople then, because they're not motivated by fixing the books, have automated estimating. So a salesperson could look into a system, pull out the estimate, know what it was supposed to be, deliver the estimate really quickly. There, you know, there's a, a team of project managers in behind sales, so sales can then drop it. Pass it to educated people who will put the project and the person, salesperson goes on to the next job without being in the weeds of that. If you're interested in a different way of approaching your sales team, it deals with some of the problems with estimating the productivity of salespeople, you know, always having to reinvent a pricing scheme for every salesperson, every situation, which is heavy for the organization, the machine. Anyway, it was an interesting book and he has a whole series of webinars and stuff on how to do it. We had something like that taking place in our, in our organization.
I, I, I concur totally. Uh, definitely find, as a small business owner too, finding sales is, is always a challenge. It's me and my business partner and a sales associate for us. But, um, we've been looking to do, um, selling in, uh, different ways, especially stateside this year. And we've been having a fair amount of success with, uh, an affiliate program, uh, which is commission-based. Uh, and getting people down, running for us down the states. That said, I, for us, where we're really looking to help automate us is through AI. And, uh, and having a system that can easily calculate stuff out because it knows exactly what we do. Uh, and can iterate, uh, on some of the semantics. Are we going to be there this year? I hope so, but I don't think so. Um, but that's going to be transformative for a lot of businesses, I feel. Anyone else on that?
Well, we've, we've increased our sales force by forty percent since 2020. Something like boots on the ground and our technicians, where our sales team has grown by five technicians across Canada. So we're having to get more technicians to service our existing customers quicker, but also more equipment in market. And our new equipment sales has gone up significantly since 2020 because a lot of people have been by more automated and updated systems. Um, part of that might have been like to tell us point, the liquidity of the market with extra government grant money available. But, um, in terms of sales structure, we've automated our marketing to feed our sales team.
Yes.
So that we're automatically populating, giving them customers in the geographic territories because I've segmented it by territory geographically. So they get new customers, they get leads through our website of what products they're interested in and it's going to them directly uh, through Sales Hub that has side of our marketing and our, uh, our CRM tools for our sales team. So we do that and also kind of to, to Steve's point by having centralized pricing. I have like a shared OneDrive. It's not state-of-the-art or anything, but it's a shared OneDrive Excel spreadsheet all by manufacturing price points. Uh, so my sales team is empowered to get that pricing information. They don't need to reach out to anybody that will want, try to minimize roadblocks for them so that they can be empowered. And they know the parameters that they can operate it within, uh, to expedite that whole turnaround. Because our customers, like has been alluded to a few times with print jobs or what have you, equipment, they want it when they want it. Takes them nine months to decide they want to get it and then they want it yesterday once they did make that decision.
I, I, I think for people like yourselves and even us, right? We sell the same product over and over. You sell this finishing device over and over. But for guys like them where, you know, there might be some foil stamping, there might be some extra fold. I mean, I, there's, there's so much complexity in some of the things that they're quoting. I think it's, it's probably more challenging to come up with a, you know, a one, a one-size-fits-all just because of the diversity. And maybe, Todd, that's not the case for you, but I certainly walk into a lot of shops where I see, you know, a lot of different types of finishing going on, on a, on a product, whether it's a book or something else.
You know, Dan, um, we're using 2024 as a bit of a reset. I manage our business development efforts and, and went back to traditional specification sales where we're talking to the designer and talking to the brands. And, you know, we're, we're coming out of this too, almost starting from the beginning in a way, just really, how do you find these customers that were so near and dear to you over the years and trying to find them all over again? And, and a much younger demographic who doesn't really care about print sometimes and trying to get them to love paper, love printing and love the embellishments and love the smell and all the things that we've developed. And so we've, we've turned to our vendor partners. We've started a program where we're really focusing on best practices. And, and, and learning from things that others have done successfully over the years and, and really made that part of our training. So that, yeah, we've been really fortunate. We've got some incredible, um, interns that we've taken from TMU. And we've got, I would say at Spicer's, we probably have about fifteen people over the years that have come from Ryerson. And, and so we've got this young team right now that we're, we're creating jobs that kind of fit their personalities as well and their interests. And in kind of giving them something that they're passionate about and learning from the experts and getting out there and doing it. We're really kind of building a new team of something that was very traditional. And in fact, a lot of our competitors don't even do it anymore. As a country, um, as a company, we have five business development folks across the country and three in Ontario. And just kind of getting back to basics a little bit too, just, i- it just seems that after we came back from COVID, just trying to find some of these folks that we were traditionally calling on, just.
Yeah.
It's been very, very difficult.
I think traditional back-to-basics type selling, and to answer your question, Ed, are people taking people in right now? Yes, they are. Uh, they have time to meet. There's usually one day a week that someone's in an office somewhere that you can, you can meet physically. And I would also say, you know, with traditional, uh, back-to-basics selling, uh, that you, you know, what supports that too is the, the social side. So everyone's been jumping on to LinkedIn. I've seen a lot of that. And Instagram supports that, but the real selling is still happening person to person. Would, would people concur with that?
I do, yes.
Absolutely.
Sure. It's nice because it's almost hybridized in the sense that virtual, to help offset or augment that in-person and AI to help feed through. So it, yeah, it's kind of, it's almost hybridized since this whole COVID experience where things were pressured to be video-only. It's now nice that you can hybridize and meet your customers' expectations, whether it's in-person demos or virtual demos. If it's geographically limited or multiple locations, it's, it's nice that you can hybridize and match to what your customer needs or wants.
Yeah.
I think, uh, again, to everybody's point, there's a tremendous opportunity because nobody's been able to go anywhere for a number of years. So you can imagine almost an entire cycle of someone in university has never physically been to more than one plant. Understand how it's, a book is made or something's primated or anything within our industry is manufactured. And what, what I've been pushing is to, A, create the trust with the sales reps. So that sales and operations silos needs to be busted, right? That has to be gone. It exists everywhere. But once that's busted, it's bringing in the clients. So the client's coming in, seeing how you operate, getting excited because they're seeing people on the floor excited, there's managers excited. And it's that trust that, again, it's that one-on-one, oh, I've just been to so-and-so and I know how they do things. I'm going to feel comfortable. Rather than us bringing our presentation to their boardroom table, that's a harder sell. But if you can get people into your facility, show them how you do things and show how great your, your folks are, then it's a huge value.
Thank you for giving me a tour the other way. It energizes me too, even though like there's no direct selling involved. It just sort of re-energizes people exposed to the industry because you see how people are doing it, you see how excited they are about their business and their automation and their equipment. It's infectious. It's sort of, yeah.
And, and we have so many younger people coming into our business, right? So again, we've had these conversations before, but if we can get them excited, they're our future. There are decades to come and so.
Well, yeah, so let's hope that 2024, our selling activities continue and we, uh, we nail it, uh, with a real year. And moving on, uh, the next question, uh, is what type of key performance indicators, KPIs, uh, do you look at within your organization to benchmark your success? Other than sales and profitability, of course. So KPIs, what are we looking at as far as leading performance indicators in our businesses these days? You had mentioned probably stockpiles and whether you're.
I think it's market share for us.
Market share.
Market share is probably the one thing that we look at, yeah. How do we, how much market share do we have? Is it going up or is it going down?
I look at, so I'll just jump in, maybe kick start. For, for me, I work in different ones, but like it's obviously total sales, but also margin-specific. So at this point, I'm not letting the salespeople do the pricing because the margin will be gone. So it's, yeah, margin-specific, it's different margin supplies versus equipment. You, I mean, used to probably have different margins and that and overall volumes by segments, so.
I'll just refute that because if you, if you have a, uh, program that you would incentivize them in terms of margin, margin.
There you go.
Yeah.
Then you're driving margin and they don't want to sell something that they're not going to make any money on. So, yeah.
We had a KPI that, that I liked. We started it five or six years ago and it was just how often we delivered the job on time.
Yes.
It was a great big number and it was like literally that doesn't exist in a lot of your, uh, systems. So like, it's, it did that, if you promised it on Tuesday, did it go on Tuesday or was it Wednesday? Or was it, so we got, when we started, it was like eighty-five percent. And then we realized there's a small portion of our jobs, we couldn't even track because they weren't really put in. So then we really made a hard firm, uh, attempt to get on top of that nearly. I'd say like ninety-five percent of what we did, we could track then. And then we got the number up around ninety-nine percent. So then it became every time something was ever late, it basically, uh, you know, we called in a committee. It's like, why did that go late? It became so infrequent. And that changed a lot of things, like it made, made people aware of where the, what the goal was and delivering, promising on the right time. You started too by saying you have busy days and weekdays. Well, if you want to be on time, then don't promise the world. Like quit having the sales guy say, I'll do it tomorrow.
Sounds like luxury to me, but.
It does. Truth of the matter is you can also price, we talked about pricing and sales, right? Price, one price for one day, another price for, for the flexibility to have three, five-day delivery. And, and we, we're so used to paying that for everything we buy from Amazon to flights to hotels. We have different prices for different speeds. And yet in printing, we just say, this is the price. I promised it tomorrow. And, and we all try to live by that anyway. It was a good metric, KPI. It kind of, it allowed a lot of people to have a lot of discussion about why, whether you delivered on the date you promised you were going to deliver.
And to your point, I feel as, as we go down these automated systems, we, we're getting more data on our, on our production workflow. And, and, uh, production KPIs are, are more, there's more of them because you can actually see them. Either using Power BI or some sort of, uh, service. So, um, I feel that we definitely can, uh, use our, our dashboards that we have in our systems to drive different KPIs. Uh, Mark Redd, what are you seeing in your automated world that people are using as KPIs to measure their success? Or maybe your success?
Well, I'll tell you a little bit about us. Um, because we're a small company of ten people. The only KPI I give my staff is how big of a smile are you leaving the customers with?
The smile KPI.
In centimeters or is that?
Size and duration.
I missed that.
Size and duration of sauce.
Exactly.
It's like two factories.
You, you went, you went a different route, something.
So an emotional KPI.
Yeah, it's an emotional API, but, um, but yeah, you know, it's like you, it's, it's the integrity. What sort of expectations are you leaving the customers with? Um, and our customers tell us all the time, they need to go at the speed of life. And life is their production today, right? So it's, um, it's something that we're trying very hard to accommodate because there are divisions of certain business owners are, we'll press the button and we have automation. Well, without the data and the logic to help us build that for the customer, uh, it's, it's a little bit difficult and challenging sometimes. But we get there, we get there with lots of our customers and, and at the end of the day, they're left with, um, time to spend more personal time, either at home or with their customers. And I've got customers that have said it often now whereby, um, now that they have more time in prepress, they're able to spend more time selling to the customer or educating the customer on what more they can do for you. So it's, it's kind of a refreshing thing as to what automation can do for the customer's customer.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, Dan.
Yes.
Just because one of our KPIs, which is a weekly one, we look at it in stock percentage. And that links right back to the first question. So we have to, we have to be as accurate as possible, uh, because that's what our customers are asking us for. But we're having some time.
What's on the floor?
Understanding what they are looking for. We have, we have to reconcile both.
Um, and Anthony, just to get back to your KPI of, uh, market share, uh, uh, someone was asking, how, how do you, how do you measure market share as a KPI?
Well, I guess as a manufacturer, we have access to some government data, sales data, uh, that, that allows us to understand, you know, what was brought into the country, what was manufactured by the manufacturers. We know what we manufactured and sold. So it's, it's certainly something that we can measure. And I would say that the reason, you know, we could look at sales versus prior year or volume versus prior year. But we, you know, we, we sell paper and demand declines annually for paper. We know that demand declines annually between three to five percent. So if we were basing our performance on a sales metric or a volume metric, then that probably isn't doing ourselves any favor. So, but if we can measure it against what percentage of market share do we have? Hey, we went down two percent this year with a market went down four. That must mean we gained market share. It's, it's probably a metric that makes a little bit more sense for us versus using volume or revenue. Because we do understand that, you know, hey, a lot of people move to digital communications. We see it absolutely, you know, uh, certainly in, in the transaction.
Thought statements.
Well, right, do you get your Visa bill or do you get it, you get it on your phone? But, and even Jason, right? I mean, look, there's, there's a lot of people that choose to read digitally. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's just the reality. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and our, we always say in, in the paper world, the definition of winning is different than a lot of others. If you're, if you're losing less than.
That's it, right?
You're winning.
If we're losing less than the other guy, then we're winning.
And, and, and then the end in our world is, okay, what, what, how are you going to shift your capacity to make sure that you continue to serve your customers, but make sure that you don't, you don't end up with, with assets that are, that are not used?
That's a great point, right? Just because we're making less paper doesn't mean that we're not using the technology or the assets that we have to make other things, right? There's a lot of people that want paper towel and tissue paper. So we make that instead.
I think that's, that's an important point though too. And I kind of smiled when the question was asked because it's a great question. I feel like COVID, the pandemic, really through using KPIs to manage our business out the window. We all just were like, our KPI was if your head was above water, life was great, right?
We're making money.
But I think like to their point, whether it's top line revenue, profitability, value-add contribution, like whatever you choose to use there. But, um, one thing that we're focused on heavily is, is equipment utilization type KPIs, more operational KPIs. How can we get more or do better with the assets that we've got? Um, and really focus on, on those efficiencies within the business, not just generating revenue, right?
Well, there's lots of people with technology like, like yours that want to make sure they're running three shifts, that want to make sure those machines are running ninety percent of the time. Absolutely. Those, those should be targets and goals for you guys. I mean, I cover the West Coast, so you probably know who I'm talking about. They just got one of those guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everyone, for both, uh, joining us here physically in person and as well virtually. Uh, it's great. We ran a little over about time, but, uh, it's great, great questions, great answers. Thank you, Dan, as well. So I co-moderator today. Thank you, uh, Ali as well and H M U for the technology. So we'd like to acknowledge and thank our platinum sponsors once again for, uh, supporting the DIA and its initiatives, including Canon, HP Innovative Displays, Conicum Nolta, Spicer's and Trinet Global Logistics, as well as our gold sponsors, Adobe, Uji Film, Graphics Canada, Heidelberg, Kodak, Mini Giants, Kongsberg Precision Cutting Systems and Plastic and Paper, as well as our silver sponsors of GMG Color and Sydney Stone. Thanks again to HP for the technology provided today, as well as the facility for our in-person, uh, meeting as well. Uh, our next meeting, so please mark your books, is Wednesday, February the twenty-first, noon till two PM Eastern Time. Hands-on Environmental Sustainability. So a panel of four printers and one environmental specialist. We'll talk about what they've done so far and what the next steps are today towards environmental sustainability. Join the DIA today. Feel free to scan this QR code for those that have joined us virtually. Feel free to take a shot there. I'll give you a beat to do that. And thank you, everyone, for joining us today. We hope you found it both educational and fun. An appreciation of everyone's generous contribution of their time today. We are going to be, uh, donating to the Canadian Print Scholarship Fund today. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. We are going to be uh donating to the Canadian Print Scholarship Fund today. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dan.
Can you have the rest of the day off?
As usual.
Mark said I could have the rest of the day off.
Something different.
Thank you to everyone who contributed. That was amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, Dan.
Shabby.